Regular Board Meeting of November 15th will come to order. We'll ask Madam Secretary for a roll call.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Cotter is here, Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
Mrs. Forrest.
Here.
Mrs. Dodd.
Here.
Mrs. Pistana.
Here.
And President Carlson.
Here, thank you.
All present.
All right, for our pledge allegiance this evening, we have some special guests here joining us. I'd like to invite Sergeant Joe Selvia, Commander of the AMVETS 2006, up to the podium, as well as Sergeant Tom Oltsvigg, Commander of VFW Post 9914. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Colonel.
Please cross your hearts, cover if you've covered.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, items from the Board, Section 2, Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pistana.
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Long. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Board President comments. A few comments here this evening. On behalf of the Huron Valley Board of Education, I want to thank the community and the 10,286 voters who engaged and participated in the most local level of government that there is, and that is our school districts. A special thank you to the 7,487 voters who voted yes on the non-Homestead renewal and the 6,401 voters who voted yes on the non-Homestead restoration. The last 20 months, without a doubt, have been the most difficult period of time in Huron Valley's history for students, parents, staff, and administrators. And despite this difficult time, our community came together on November 2nd to approve both the renewal and the restoration of the non-Homestead. This Board of Education and our superintendent are grateful for your confidence in supporting your local school communities, and most importantly, for voting yes for our Huron Valley students. This school board continues to be engaged and purposeful in our outreach and hearing from our parents. Last week, November 9th, Laura Dodd, Denise Forrest, Denise Pistana, Tom Wiseman, and myself had a Community Connection Forum at Oak Valley Middle School from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We were able to visit in a one-on-one format with parents who attended the forum. We are doing this every quarter. The first quarter, we met at Spring Mills and Kurtz, and this quarter, we had it at Oak Valley Middle School. On November 10th, the Huron Valley Task Force met with parent, staff, administrators to discuss social and emotional gaps that have widened during the COVID pandemic. Groups of parents split up into smaller workgroups to identify issues and a future desire state. Next meeting will focus on strategies to close this gap. And as a reminder, this community task force is designed to do three things. Number one, close that gap of learning loss that occurred during the COVID pandemic. Number two is close the gap that had widened on social and emotional well-being of our students. And the third thing is preparing our students for the future economy that is coming. So we are addressing that social and emotional well-being question first, then we'll tackle the learning loss, and then we'll move on to preparing our students for tomorrow's economy. And last, thank you to all parents for continuing to be engaged, and to our staff and principals for working hard to create a successful learning environment from our staff. Thank you very much. We'll now move to Huron Valley Hero and Veteran Recognition.
Thank you, Board President Carlson, members of the Board of Education, and members of our community. As is our tradition in Huron Valley, each year on Veterans Day, we recognize those members of our team, staff members who have served in the military, as well as family members of our staff who have served in the military, and are veterans. Before doing that, though, we'd like to show a short video, if we could, about the origins of Veterans Day and Armistice Day, and how that is different from Memorial Day. As lifelong learners, these recognitions are often confused, so I thought that it would be appropriate for us to have a short video. If I can ask for my friends in the technology support group to go ahead and bring that up.
Veterans Day, November 11th. A day of observance, remembrance, and reflection. A day set aside to thank and honor all military veterans who have served our nation honorably in war or peacetime. It is also a commemoration of how our military veterans stand as the transition between the struggle of life and sacrifice and the peace that follows. Veterans Day is a federal holiday in the United States, observed annually on November 11th, and this day gives all Americans the opportunity to celebrate the bravery, service, and sacrifice of all U.S. veterans, living and deceased. A veteran is someone who has served on active duty in the United States Armed Forces, Public Health Service, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, or Environmental Science Service. We must also never forget any prisoner of war or those missing in action who did not return home. There are currently more than 17 million veterans living in the U.S. in every state and territory. They come from all walks of life, some are old and some are young, some served here at home and others overseas. They are from big cities, small towns, and everywhere in between. But how is this holiday different than Memorial Day, and why November 11th? Veterans Day celebrates the service of all U.S. military veterans, while Memorial Day, which is observed in May, honors service members who have died in service to their country or as a result of injuries incurred in battle. Another military holiday that also occurs in May, Armed Forces Day, honors those currently serving in the U.S. military. Veterans Day, formerly known as Armistice Day, was originally set as a U.S. legal holiday to honor the end of the major hostilities of World War I, as they were formally ended at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918. For that reason, November 11th, 1918, was largely considered the end of the war to end all wars, and dubbed Armistice Day. In November 1919, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed the first commemoration of Armistice Day with the following words. "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service, and with gratitude for the victory, both because of the thing from which it has freed us, and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of the nations." In legislation that was passed in 1938, November 11th was made a legal holiday and dedicated to the cause of world peace and to be hereafter celebrated and known as Armistice Day. As such, this new legal holiday was primarily a day set aside to honor only veterans of World War I. In other nations also involved in the First World War, their Remembrance Day is also observed on November 11th. In 1945, World War II veteran Raymond Weeks from Birmingham, Alabama, had the idea to expand Armistice Day to celebrate all veterans, not just those who died and served in World War I. Weeks led a delegation to General Dwight Eisenhower, who supported the idea of a National Veterans Day. At the continued urging of major U.S. veteran organizations, Armistice Day was renamed Veterans Day in 1954. And later that year, now-President Dwight D. Eisenhower issued the first Veterans Day proclamation, calling upon Americans everywhere to rededicate themselves to the cause of The Veterans Day national ceremony is held each year at Arlington National Cemetery at 11:00 AM. A color guard made up of members from each branch of the military renders honors to America's war dead during a tradition-rich ceremony at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. The president or his representative places a wreath at the tomb, and a bugler sounds taps. At the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, an American soldier, a veteran, is buried on a Virginia hillside overlooking the Potomac River and Washington, D.C. Inscribed on the back of the tomb are the words, "Here rests in honored glory an American soldier, known but to God." An army sentinel maintains a 24-hour guard over the tomb, a constant vigil regardless of weather conditions. How can you help to honor Americans veterans on Veterans Day? Write letters to veterans with help from local American Legion or VFW, Veterans of Foreign Wars chapters. Visit and place small U.S. flags or a wreath at the graves of your local veterans. In school, students can share photographs of family members who are veterans, and may also look up former students, teachers, and staff who are veterans to also display their names and pictures. Many of us are sons, daughters, cousins, or other relatives of a veteran or current service member. By setting aside November 11th and engaging in discussion about these crucial members of our family and our society, we are able to hear from and about those closest to us who have helped to shape U.S. history. Veterans Day continues to be observed each and every year on November 11th, regardless of what day of the week on which it falls. The observance of Veterans Day not only preserves the historical significance of November 11th, but helps focus attention on the important purpose of this day, a celebration to honor America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. Please remember to thank a veteran today. Thank them for their service and their sacrifice on behalf of all of us and to the United
Very nice. Thank you, Ms. Root. So we'll go right into our Veteran Day recognitions.
Mrs. Dodd is going to kick us off with her names.
Okay.
Okay, I'll start, starting with the Board of Education. Murray Adrian Cotter, U.S. Army Air Corps, father of Lindsey Cotter. Wilfred Wiseman, U.S. Marine Corps, U.S. Navy, father of Tom Wiseman. Albert Petroni, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Tom Wiseman. Shawn Carlson, U.S. Air Force, Huron Valley Schools Board of Education member. Walter Sambelli, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Shawn Carlson. Robert Bruce Carlson, U.S. Air Force, father of Shawn Carlson. Roy Graves, U.S. Army, uncle of Shawn Carlson. Ed Graves, U.S. Army, uncle of Shawn Carlson. Robert Carlson, U.S. Army, uncle of Shawn Carlson. David Jones, U.S. Army, father of Denise Pistana. Leonard Forrest, U.S. Army, father of Denise Forrest. Ronald Robillard, U.S. Navy, brother-in-law of Denise Forrest. Dean Dodd, U.S. Navy, father-in-law of Laura Dodd. Central Office. Brad Roberts, U.S. Army, HVS Supervisor of Operations. Jerry Parrott, Sr., U.S. Air Force, father of Jerry Parrott. Joseph Stephen Toth, U.S. Army, father of Jennifer Bjorkman. Randy Root and Kyle Root, U.S. Air Force, husband and son of Kim Root. Charles Root, U.S. Army, son of Kim Root. Lisa Baumann, U.S. Army, sister of Laura Colvin. James A. Lowe, Jr., U.S. Army, husband of Lori Lowe. James A. Lowe, Sr., U.S. Army, father-in-law of Lori Lowe. Michael Lowe, U.S. Army, brother-in-law of Lori Lowe. Eric Russell, U.S. Coast Guard, brother-in-law of Lori Lowe. Anthony Sizio, U.S. Marine, father-in-law of Colleen Armstrong. Cody A. Kramer and Carrie Kramer, U.S. Air Force, husband and brother-in-law of Bev Kramer. Robert Hill, U.S. Army, father of Mike Hill. Donald L. Comis, U.S. Army, father of Sheila Witkowski. Tony Pellerito, U.S. Army, father of Vicki Pipoly. Jessica DeFrain, U.S. Air Force, daughter of Sandy Maggie. Eli Glover, U.S. Air Force, son of Rulisha Glover-Payne. Ray Sean Glover, U.S. Marine, son of Rulisha Glover-Payne. Latonya Glover, U.S. Marine, daughter-in-law of Rulisha Glover-Payne. Apollo Early Childhood Center. Ted Upham, U.S. Navy, father of John Upham. Jim Upham, U.S. Navy, brother of John Upham. John Bicknell, U.S. Air Force, husband of Angie Bicknell. Jeffrey Bohm, U.S. Navy, husband of Sonia Bohm.
Thank you. Representing veterans from Country Oaks Elementary, Lieutenant Colonel Brian Gerald, Army National Guard, he's currently active in the husband of Kristen Gerald. Arthur Waitovich, U.S. Army, he's the uncle of Nancy Willard. Marvin W. Spring, U.S. Army, father of Mitch Spring. Robert A. Spring, U.S. Army, also uncle to Mitch Spring. Joe Markey, U.S. Army, currently active, and he's a nephew of Doug Markey. John Wittenberg, Air Guard, currently active and son of Linda Legavick. Representing Johnson Elementary, Bill Atkinson, U.S. Navy, he's the grandfather of Josh Janack. Daniel Steinbach, U.S. Army, father of Kim Freiberg. Harry Falkerson, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Kim Freiberg. Darrell Kettle, U.S. Army, husband of Doreen Kettle. Floyd Fagley, U.S. Army, Air Force, Milford graduate and father to Doreen Kettle. Gary Fuller, U.S. Army, stepfather of Becky Ladabouchet. Dave Mackey, U.S. Navy, father to Ryan Mackey. Frederick Brown III, U.S. Army, and the father of Chris Brown. Frederick Brown, Jr., also U.S. Army, grandfather of Chris Brown. Robert Frazier, U.S. Navy, father of Mark Frazier. Alan Witherspoon, U.S. Army, father of Kim Rabidu. Keith Teal, Sr., U.S. Army National Guard, he's the father of Kelly Shanaweth. Gregory Shanaweth, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Kelly. Milton Thiel, Teal, U.S. Army, he's the grandfather of Kelly Thiel. Homer West, U.S. Army, Air Force, grandfather of Kelly Shanaweth. Richard Crosston, U.S. Army, father of John Crosston. Sam Crosston, U.S. Navy, grandfather of John Crosston. And representing Heritage Elementary, David Hall, United States Marine Corps, a Milford graduate and a husband of Tammy Hall. Brian Ratzoff, U.S. Air Force, and the father to Chrissy Gustafson. Thank you.
Representing Highland Elementary, Louis Collins, U.S. Marine Corps, active duty, brother of Tricia Campbell. Vincent L. Lazott, U.S. Air Force, father of Beth Dietrich. William B. Dietrich, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Beth Dietrich. Robert Grandizak, U.S. Army, father of Jamie Page. Christopher Shanks, U.S. Coast Guard, father of Caitlin Shanks. David Brock, U.S. Air Force, father-in-law of Shawn Budo. Kurtz Elementary. Kim Papchek, U.S. Marine Corps, Kurtz Media Center Tech. Christopher Papchek, U.S. Army, son of Kim Papchek. Rudolph Pertington, U.S. Army, father of Kathy Kramer. Robert Harrington, U.S. Army, grandfather of Lisa Spoor. Cameron Nelson, Army, National Guard, father of Jessica Stewart. Raymond Talbot, U.S. Navy and Coast Guard, father of Carol Gettree. Robert Talbot, U.S. Navy, nephew of Carol Gettree. Lakewood Elementary. Raymond Abermonte, U.S. Army, father of Jill Brower. Rob and Corey Warby, Marines, brother-in-law and nephew of Jill Brower. James Norrid, U.S. Air Force, father of Deb Fuss. Michael Norrid, U.S. Army, uncle of Deb Fuss. Jake Fuss, Army National Guard, active duty, nephew of Deb Fuss. Earl Norrid, U.S. Army, grandfather of Deb Fuss. Greg D. Maute, Army National Guard, active duty, brother of Lisa Maute. Michael Secourt, U.S. Navy, brother of Kim Zasly. Joe Brewer, U.S. Army, Lakeland graduate, nephew of Patty Turner. Robert Harrington, U.S. Army, grandfather of Michelle Thompson. Leonard Rosenthal, U.S. Army, father of Beth Lesko. Brian Peace, U.S. Marine Corps, brother of Laura Buener. Brendan Peace, U.S. Marine Corps, active duty, nephew of Lauren Buener. Luther Nickerman, U.S. Army, grandfather of Donell Eller. Anthony Sanders, U.S. Navy, father of Sherri Cruss. Chet Sanders, U.S. Army, uncle of Sherri Cruss. Ben Sinkowitz, U.S. Army, uncle of Sherri Cruss. Tim Benneck, U.S. Army, cousin of Sherri Cruss. John Cruss, father-in-law Sherri Cruss. Donald Groden, U.S. Army, grandfather of Lindsey Kebell. Francis Myselak, U.S. Army, grandfather of Lindsey Kebell. David Groden, U.S. Navy, uncle of Lindsey Kebell. Thank you.
Representing Oxbow Elementary, Mitchell Farnham, U.S. Navy, son of Carrie Farnham. Andrew Signo, U.S. Marine Corps, active duty, nephew of Ann Marie Brinkman. Raymond Signo, U.S. Army, father of Ann Marie Brinkman. Walter Brinkman, U.S. Navy, father-in-law of Ann Marie Brinkman. Keith Brinkman, U.S. Air Force, brother-in-law of Ann Marie Brinkman. Clarence Duke Cassidy, U.S. Army, father of Dana Abrey. Greg Cassidy, U.S. Army and U.S. Air Force Reserves, brother of Dana Abrey. James Rapp, U.S. Army, father of Emily Richards and uncle of Jennifer Pipkin. Ronald Zinzer, U.S. Coast Guard, father of Beth McGinnis. Jeff Black, U.S. Army, father of Melissa Black McClellan. Don Serrero, U.S. Army, mother of Melissa Black McClellan. Victor Serrano, U.S. Army, stepfather of Melissa Black McCollum. John Kerr, U.S. Air Force, father of Jane K. Skolowski. Tim Dalton, U.S. Marine Corps, father-in-law of Philip Wotala. Ronald Bory, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Danielle Bory. Andrew Nowicki, U.S. Army, World War II, grandfather of Danielle Bory. Raymond Burrell, U.S. Marines, grandfather of Danielle Bory. Robert Greenleaf, U.S. Marine Corps, father-in-law of Justine Greenleaf. Daniel Allen, U.S. Army, brother of Nicole Spangler. Douglas Spangler, U.S. Marine Corps, father-in-law of Nicole Spangler. Earl Warden, U.S. Army, grandfather of Nicole Spangler. Patrick Allen, U.S. Army, great-uncle of Nicole Sprangler. Robert Fitzpatrick, U.S. Army, grandfather of Nicole Sprangler. Representing Spring Mills Elementary. Tim Dockery, U.S. Navy. Tim Bentley, U.S. Army, nephew of Sarah Bentley. James T. Davis, U.S. Army, brother of Kathy Kiaran. Kenneth G. Davis, U.S. Navy, father of Kathy Kiaran. Archie H. Kiaran, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Kathy Kiaran. Texas T. Nations, U.S. Navy, uncle of Kathy Kiaran. Edward Davis, U.S. Navy, uncle of Kathy Kiaran. William Davis, U.S. Navy, uncle of Kathy Kiaran. Francis Davis, U.S. Navy, uncle of Kathy Kiaran. James A. Bromley, U.S. Army, brother of Kathy Kiaran. Robert L. Bromley, U.S. Army, brother of Kathy Kiaran. Edward Sheldon, U.S. Marines, husband of Julie Sheldon. Paul Gilbert Sheldon, U.S. Marines, father-in-law of Julie Sheldon. Larry West, U.S. Army, father of Julie Sheldon. Gary West, U.S. Marines, uncle of Julie Sheldon. Kurt Sauvey, U.S. Army, nephew of Julie Sheldon. Kevin Faute, U.S. Air Force, active duty, brother-in-law of Nicole Faute. John Quinn, U.S. Air Force, father of Lori O'Neal. Steve Schlaff, U.S. Army, brother-in-law of Lori O'Neal. David Arnt, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Kristen Arnt. Elliot Covella, United States Marine Corps, active duty, son of Stephanie Covella. Edward Robertson, Robeson, U.S. Marines, father of Nicole Faute. George Robeson, U.S. Army, grandfather of Nicole Faute. Michael Pompadance, U.S. Army, husband of Rachel Pompadance. Thaddeus Matt, U.S. Army, grandfather of Rachel Pompadance. John McCormick, U.S. Army, grandfather of Rachel Pompadance. Thank you.
Veterans that mere middle school staff would like to recognize are the following. Brandy Budsher, U.S. Navy, Para-educator Resource Room. James Rhode, National Guard, brother of Brandy. Emil Mazur, Vietnam Veteran, U.S. Army, father of Amanda De La. Israel Sagana, U.S. Army, grandfather of Mike DeVoren. Stephen DeVoren, U.S. Air Force, father of Mike DeVoren. Terry Tennant, U.S. Army, Korean War, father of Jamie Halick. Walter Marchicki, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Carrie Bradley. Stuart Proctor, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Carrie Bradley. Kyle Proctor, U.S. Navy, aunt of Carrie Bradley. Douglas Proctor, U.S. Navy, uncle of Carrie Bradley. John Colley Price III, U.S. Army, grandfather of Sherri Lozan. Jerry Blendman, U.S. Army, father of Sherri Lozan. Jeremy Coder, U.S. Army, brother of Sherri Lozan. Frank J. Strick, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Susie Spellicy. Terrence M. Spellicy, U.S. Army, father of Susie. Oak Valley Middle School veterans, or veterans that Oak Valley Middle School would like to recognize are the following. Frank Benedict, U.S. Navy, father of Heather Chalwick. Brett Munster, U.S. Marine Corps, cousin of Sarah Tapley. Mark Smith, U.S. Air Force, brother of Lori Raleigh. John Hathaway, U.S. Army, father of Carrie Adresson. Philip Spencer Kilgore, father of Dolores McKinney. Robert Day, U.S. Navy, husband of Jennifer Day. Jeff Matheny, U.S. Air Force, Matheny, U.S. Air Force cousin of Brett Myers. Michael Malone, U.S. Army, uncle of Brett Myers. Thomas Lane, U.S. Army, grandpa of Kendra Applin. Kevin Lane, U.S. Army and Army Reserve, father of Kendra Applin. Robin Applin, U.S. Navy, father-in-law of Kendra Applin. Robert Steely Terrill, Jr., U.S. Marine Corps, father of Patricia Terrill. Robert Steely Terrill, Sr., U.S. Navy, grandfather of Patricia Terrill. Veterans that White Lake Middle School would like to recognize are the following. Veterans that White Lake Middle School would like to recognize are the following. Raymond Fabelli, U.S. Navy, active duty, nephew of Janet Buchanan. Joseph Karoski, U.S. Army, grandfather of Nick Peruski. Donald R. McKinley, U.S. Army, father of Carol Barber. Benjamin Poplinsky, U.S. Marines, grandfather of Jacqueline Probst. Sylvester Peruski, U.S. Army, grandfather of Nick Peruski. Marjorie Pollard O'Brien, U.S. Navy, mother of Janet Buchanan. Robert D. Wilson, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Carrot Trockman. John F. Lintall III, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Jennifer Hollowell. Samuel Ngolia, Army, grandfather of Jennifer Hollowell. Frederick Naverre, U.S. Army, grandfather of Terry Zanabel. Thomas Naverre, U.S. Army, uncle of Terry Zanabel. Marjorie Pollard O'Brien, U.S. Navy, I think we got, oh, U.S. Navy, World War II. Philip Crockett, Marine Veteran, father of Eric Crockett. Robert Magard, Army Vietnam, father-in-law of Eric Crockett. Michael Ellis, Air Force, father of Susie Rolando. John Ellis, Air Force, uncle of Susie Rolando. John Ellis, Air Force, uncle of Susie Rolando. Arthur Ellis, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Susie Rolando. Bill Palm, U.S. Navy, uncle of Susie Rolando. Kevin Chadle, U.S. Navy, Army, grandfather of Harley Holland. Henry Condon, U.S. Army, World War II, grandfather of Katie Marzick. Kenneth Marzick, U.S. Navy, father-in-law of Katie Marzick. Joshua Fee, Air Force, son of Kathy Fee.
Recognitions from Harvard High School. Staff member Raymond Denny, U.S. Marines, custodian. Robert Gerard, U.S. Army, father of Karen Gerard and Meg McCole. Mary Ellen Gerard, U.S. Air Force, mother of Karen Gerard and Meg McCole. Kenneth E. Kowalski, U.S. Air Force, brother-in-law of Karen Gerard and Meg McCole. Henry B. Eggsman, U.S. Navy, Purple Heart at Pearl Harbor, uncle of Karen Gerard and Meg McCole. Scott T. Armstrong, U.S. Marine Corps, son of Scott Armstrong. William Armstrong, U.S. Army, father of Scott Armstrong. Richard D. Smith, U.S. Navy, father of Kelly Vella. Recognizations from Lakeland High School. Staff member Derek Rupp, U.S. Navy, ELA teacher. Staff member Kevin Berger, U.S. Army, Huron Valley Schools Utility Worker and husband of Amanda Berger. Carl Grunwald II, United States Marine Corps, father of Amanda Berger. Carl Grunwald I, U.S. Marine Corps, grandfather of Amanda Berger. Paul Buckley, U.S. Navy, uncle of Amanda Berger. Charles G. Knudsen, U.S. Army, father of Bridget Knudsen. Carl E. Knudsen, U.S. Army, uncle of Bridget Knudsen. Thaddeus S. Dudek, U.S. Navy, husband of Rose Dudek. Nathaniel Papworth, U.S. Army, or excuse me, U.S. Air Force, active duty, nephew of Lori Langmire. Tim DeSorcey, U.S. Navy, brother of Lori Langmire. Tim DeSorcey, U.S. Navy, brother of Lori Langmire. Michael Ellis, U.S. Air Force, father-in-law of Scott Rolando. Darrell Holly, U.S. Navy, cousin of Scott Rolando. Peter Rolando, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Scott Rolando. Arthur Del Tor, U.S. Army, great-grandfather of Scott Rolando. Michael Chloean, U.S. Army, uncle of Wendy Keakley. Everett Held, U.S. Marines, father of Libby Held. Floyd Young, U.S. Navy, brother-in-law of Libby Held. Jeff Held, U.S. Army, brother of Libby Held. Aaron Bell, U.S. Army, nephew of Libby Held. David Hike, U.S. Marines, father of Michelle Latham. Frederick Casperzak, U.S. Army, father of Thomas Casperzak. Raymond Bratt, U.S. Army, grandfather of Jessica English. Mark Woods, U.S. Army, Vietnam stepdad to Timothy Johnson. Kenneth Lawler Senior, World War II Navy, grandfather of Timothy Johnson. Roger White, U.S. Army, uncle of Tammy Jeanette. George Bush, excuse me, George Butch White, U.S. Army, uncle of Tammy Jeanette. George White, U.S. Army, grandfather of Tammy Jeanette. Donald Jeanette, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Tammy Jeanette. William Flanagan, U.S. Army, grandfather of Krista Warner. Bill Abercrombie, U.S. Army, grandfather of Krista Warner. James Heffey, U.S. Navy, brother of Meredith Johnston. Kimberly Heffey, U.S. Navy, sister-in-law of Meredith Johnston. Edward Heffey, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Meredith Johnston. Ralph Conflitty, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Meredith Johnston. Thomas Johnston, U.S. Army, father-in-law of Meredith Johnston. And David P. Miller, U.S. Marine, father of Karen Miller.
Veterans recognitions from Milford High School. Robert Vosk, AP Biology and Biology Teacher. Brian McKenna, U.S. Army, brother of Kevin McKenna. Ronald Montella, U.S. Army, father of Marcy Rogers. Daniel Alaska, U.S. Air Force, son of Sandy Alaska. Bradley Alaska, U.S. Air Force, son of Sandy Alaska. Christopher Riley, U.S. Navy, husband of Paige Riley. Michael Brooks, U.S. Navy, father of Paige Riley. Anton Kraus, U.S. Army, son of Margaret Barany. Michael Naden, U.S. Navy, grandfather of Christopher Naden. Louis Bradbury, U.S. Army, father of Lori McDowell. Jonathan Germain, U.S. Army, son of Sherry Germain. Daniel Gross, U.S. Army, brother of Dennis Gross. Jerry Cleesby, U.S. Army, father of Elizabeth Carlson. Richard Carlson, U.S. Navy, father-in-law of Elizabeth Carlson. Matthew Groth, U.S. Army, son of Beverly Groth. Daniel Johnson, U.S. Army, brother-in-law of Kayleen Robbins. Calvin Hensler, U.S. Air Force, father-in-law of Kayleen Robbins. James Wensing, James Wensing Senior, U.S. Navy, father of Colleen Darnall. James Wensing Junior, U.S. Navy, brother of Colleen Darnall. Bobby Phillips, U.S. Marines, brother-in-law of Colleen Darnall. Mervyn Darnall, U.S. Air Force, father-in-law of Colleen Darnall. Jonathan W. Germain, did we get this one? Jonathan W. Germain, U.S. Army, son of Sherry Germain. William Nouse, U.S. Army, father of Michelle Coronanto. Roberta Cox Geisler, U.S. Air Force, mother of Kate Summer. And veteran recognitions from the Transportation Department. Jamie Moose, U.S. Army. George Roberts Senior, U.S. Army, father of Jamie Moose. John Schmetz, U.S. Army, father of Jackie Poehl. Caleb Halterman, U.S. Air Force, son-in-law of Christie Van. Simon Pilsner, U.S. Army, father of Mary Phipps. David Pilsner, U.S. Army, brother of Mary Phipps. James Howe, U.S. Army, father of Janice Walker. Matt Walker, U.S. Army, husband of Janice Walker. Kirk Hutchinson, U.S. Army, brother-in-law of Janice Walker. Bradley Craig, U.S. Navy, nephew of Janice Walker. William Campbell, U.S. Army, husband of Natalie Campbell. James Campbell, U.S. Marine Corps, father-in-law of Natalie Campbell. Craig Hauck, U.S. Navy, brother of Natalie Campbell. Robert Hauck, U.S. Air Force, father of Natalie Campbell. Jamie Hauck, U.S. Navy, sister-in-law of Natalie Campbell. Michael Thomas, U.S. Army, father of Tisha Weber. Richard Manning, U.S. Army, stepfather of Tisha Weber. Edward Weber, Coast Guard, father-in-law of Tisha Weber. Leon Frederick Lapointe, U.S. Air Force, father of Wendy Cota. George K. Cronin, U.S. Navy, brother of Connie Ciccarelli. Michael Fontana, U.S. Air Force, nephew of Mary Maitiak. Robert C. Moran, U.S. Navy, father of Sue Crockett. Gary S. Moran, U.S. Navy, uncle of Sue Crockett. Paul E. Moran, U.S. Army, uncle of Sue Crockett. Michael P. Moran, U.S. Army, brother of Sue Crockett. William Spencer, U.S. Army, son-in-law of Amy Curtis. Robert Keller, U.S. Army, father of Amy Curtis. Michelle King, U.S. Air Force, niece of Sandy Pocheka. Raymond King, U.S. Air Force, nephew of Candy Pocheka. Kevin Tunison, U.S. Marines, brother of Corinne Springer.
Thank you, thank you, board members, and of course, thank you to our veterans. A round of applause for our veterans that have been recognized. I would like to just briefly invite Commander Salvia and Commander Oltselbig back up to the microphone just for a second. These gentlemen are tremendous Huron Valley heroes for us. They are constantly out in the community. They are representative of that freedom is not for free. And they're always helping us to understand the importance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day. I had the opportunity a week ago, last Tuesday, to share the stage with them and other veterans. Six generations of veterans in the Huron Valley community that were there, being recognized by our students. This is an important tradition for Huron Valley. When we first started doing this 10-plus years ago, it might have been six to seven pages. So, we're up to 14. I call that progress. And thank you to you gentlemen, and I'd like to invite you to say a few words, please.
Ladies and gentlemen and Colonel, it's always a pleasure. Returned to the halls of Milford High School, where I graduated in 1967. And then 54 years ago, I was in sunny Southeast Asia, meeting exciting and different people. And but it's like, I am so impressed at the veteran ceremonies at Milford and Lakeland and all of the elementary and the junior high schools. It is, it's enlightening and it makes me feel good as a veteran, a combat veteran. And, you know, knowing that we have all that support. And by reading of all of these names, of all the people that participated, I mean, it's amazing because I remember when it was very few and it just, it just seems to grow and grow. And they always say it's a very low percentage of people that serve in the military. Well, I don't think so here in Huron Valley schools, you know, so. And for that, I'd like to give one shout-out to say, actually, two shout-outs. One to Shannon Dickinson, who's a teacher at White Lake Middle School. Shannon and Sherry Lozan of Muir Middle School. They support our veterans, our VFW essay contest. And from White Lake Middle School, hopefully I get the names right here. I think it's Noah Malarski, and then at, he was at White Lake. And then at Muir Middle School, it was Duke Stimpian. They are the recipients, and we are very honored to have them winning our essay contest. And Shannon Dickinson will be our Teacher of the Year Award, as was Sherry Lozan and Mr. Howe in the past. So, I thank you, and it's always a pleasure to be here, so thank you.
I need to start by saying, I think, Colonel, you said a brief moment and just take a second. Was that aimed at me? Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Once again, I'm losing my voice, so you're lucky. It's an honor to be here with Tom. We represent all the veterans in our community. They all can't be here to say thanks, and so we try to make sure we find those veterans because they're lost out there. One of our missions is also to support patriotism in our community. Brian Howe reminded me it was 14 years ago when he and I got together to launch veterans' recognition ceremonies. Milford came along that day to observe, and from there, it just picked up. I'm, we may be one of the only school systems in the country that has this intensity of veteran recognitions. We label this, again, as Veterans Recognition Week. You can't encompass everything in one day, so. We're grateful for the support that the school board gives us, the teachers. They're pretty excited about doing things, so. And Tom and I come from kind of two different eras. Tom was definitely a combat veteran. My time in service was more on the peacetime side, other than the Detroit riots. So, that was, but both of our missions are to honor our veterans, honor our communities, bring strength to everything we have around us, bring character, and wake up our citizens to what it is to serve our country and all the men and women that serve our country, so. I just wanted to ask you, if you could read that back one more time, I missed a name in there. Could you just repeat that one more time, please? So, Tom, is there anything else we need to?
They'll be in the minutes, Joan.
All right. Thanks again, Colonel, for your wise words at Lakeland. It's appreciated.
Yeah, thank you both, certainly for your service to this country, but to your service to this community, doing a great service to all. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the board? Hearing none?
You're going to adjourn us?
Permission to leave, sir.
Permission granted. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item three, section three on the agenda items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, appreciate that. So, I'll be brief this evening. I've got a quick Non-Homestead Village results update. I would echo your earlier comments, and thanks to the community for coming out and supporting Huron Valley schools in huge numbers. We feel incredibly blessed and fortunate as a school district to have received the kind of support that we did throughout this non-homestead election. So, got a quick PowerPoint I'm going to run through here, and I'm going to run through this rather quickly. The first slide, go to the next slide, please. So, this is just a map of the renewal question, and what you see here represents all 24 precincts, and it represents precincts that are voting in support of the first question on the ballot initiative, which was to renew the Non-Homestead Village for an additional 10 years. You'll notice that everything on this map is blue. That's not a mistake. That's because every precinct voted yes, as more votes towards yes than no, which would show each precinct in blue. So, if we move to the next question, this is the actual, the actual numbers, really something to be excited about. Almost 73% of voters voted in the affirmative to support our renewal, and that's just a point of pride. It's something to be proud of, and as you'll see in several slides down the road here, that's actually in record numbers. So, if we move to the next slide, this is the restoration question, and if you'll recall, the restoration question was a little tricky, a little more confusing. We had spent a lot more time educating the community around this question. And the reason why it was confusing is because it dealt with the restoration back to 18 mills, which is what school districts count on for basic non-homestead village funding. But it used the word increase in the ballot, which is somewhat misleading and confusing. It really is a restoration back to the full 18 mill. So, we did lose one precinct, and this precinct we lost by 11 votes. There were only a total of 71 votes in this precinct. It was a very low voting precinct. If you look here, even though we lost that one precinct, it's still passed at almost 63% in the affirmative, which, again, is consistent with what the renewal passed in 2012. So, tremendous support from the community on both the renewal and the restoration. If we go to the next slide, it actually shows the breakdown of White Lake Township Precinct 4, where we lost as a no. And it was, as I've mentioned, 11 votes total, total of 71 votes. So, if we move to the next slide, it's just a little bit of history. So, last time we passed a bond for infrastructure improvements was the year 2000, and you'll notice we passed by a margin of 55.2% to 44.8%. That bond was about $100 million total. 60 million of it was dedicated to the field houses at both of the high schools. That left about $40 million for all other capital improvements throughout the Huron Valley schools. When we did our pre-bond work in 2019, after doing a deep dive and doing some master planning in terms of needs that exist across the school district, the needs came in at just over $400 million in long, in short and long-term work over the course of the next 10 years. I think everybody recognizes our bond was $180 million. I think everybody recognizes our bond was $180 million. So, we're not going to be able to do it all in this, in this current bond proposal that we have in front of us that passed in 2019. Just moving along, we passed a, I'm sorry, go back for a sec. We passed a technology and buses bond in 2009 at 57%. Our previous non-Homestead millage in 2012 at 63%, which was right around the same rate as that second question that I just showed you in the previous slide. And then failed election in 2015 of May for a building site sinking fund, a second one, and then another failed election at 41.6%. But then you'll see the last two, which are of particular importance. You know, the average between the two, the bond and the building site sinking fund, those were two different ballot questions. The bond passed at 73%, the sinking fund passed at 77%, unprecedented margins, as you can see over the last 20 years. And then the non-Homestead renewal passed at very similar margins, at 70% is just a, it's an average of the two questions, the renewal and the restoration, with the renewal passing at almost 73% and the restoration at 63%. So, if we move on to the next slide, I think this is pretty interesting as well. This is a breakdown between the absentee versus in-person voting, and you'll definitely notice a trend that's emerged over the last 20 years. In 2012, we had about 30,000 people voted. It was a general election, so you tend to see higher turnout for general election. 30% represented the absentee vote at the time. If you fast-forward to 2019, over 55% of the vote was absentee, and that's when the law took effect. Absentee voting for any reason was just prior to that, on November 5th, 2019 vote. If we move to the next slide, you'll notice this last election, almost 75% of those votes cast were absentee. So, very interesting. If you go back for just a moment, that, that, I'm sorry, you're good, one more, go back. Now, that, the comparison between Election Day and absentee, so you'll notice the absentee voting right around 7,200, and then if you go to the next slide, we actually saw a slight uptick in the number of absentee voters, and the number of in-person voters went down. So, there's, I don't know exactly what conclusions to draw from that, other than, you know, folks have gotten a taste of absentee voting, and it seems like those folks continue to vote in this election as well. And I think that is it. Any other slides? Nope? Okay. So, I'll take any questions regarding this. This is really preliminary data, but it's what we have so far.
I know you have another item on the agenda, but any questions for the superintendent regarding the non-Homestead?
Okay, thank you. The next item is our financial statement audit results, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Van Goghtham.
Thank you, Dr. Sloss. So, on an annual basis, the district has its financial records audited by an independent third-party CPA firm. This year, we're happy to have Plant Moran as our auditors. We have with us partner Michael Foster. Also on the engagement team was Jenny Kobel, who you have recognized. She's been here for several years. She's not here this evening, but Michael is here to present the results. Also wanted to thank our own team here. So, we have Heather Kerrigan, our Director of Finance, and Nanette Ryan, our Accounting Coordinator, as well as my assistant Gina Maruskin, three people who were very helpful in making sure that we had the audit done timely, that the records were readily available for review, and that this presentation you had before you this evening was ready to go in time. So, thank you very much to that staff. It wouldn't have been done without their hard efforts. So, thank you, ladies. Michael, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Kind of a tough act to follow after hearing about all the military service, but it's a pleasure to be here this evening. So, as Jeffrey stated, we're gonna talk about the results of the audit. We went over this information in detail with the Finance Committee last week, and so tonight we're just gonna go over a brief overview of the results of the audit. If there are questions as we go through the information, please don't hesitate to ask, and hopefully we can get those addressed. So, there are really three documents that are the results of the audit. There are the district's financial statements. There is a compliance audit done on the federal funding. And then the final document is the report to the Board of Education. So, we're gonna cover all those documents and do that by going through the graphics presentation that's up on the screen. So, first, we're gonna talk qualitative, so qualitative results of the audit, we're gonna start with. Then we're gonna talk quantitative and the numbers. So, on the first page, our opinion, we're issuing an unmodified opinion on both the financial statements and the federal awards as it relates to compliance. As part of the audit, we look at the district's internal controls, so the policies and procedures as it relates to handling the dollars that run through the district's accounting records. We're happy to result, there are no material weaknesses identified. We did identify, one, what's classified as a significant deficiency, and that relates to the recording of retainages, which is related to construction accounting. As noted here, that has a balance sheet-only effect on the government-wide statements, but is an additional expense that gets recognized in the fund financial statements in the Capital Projects Fund. So, again, it doesn't impact the general fund, just impacts the Capital Projects Fund. Any questions on that? So, as it relates to compliance, we're happy to report.
We got a question here, Mr. Wiseman.
Sure. Yeah, just a clarification on that. You said it has no effect on the general fund, and you find that as a significant deficiency. But truly, when we talk about retainage, it's when a company bills us for a segment of work, let's say plywood, drywall, for $100,000. We hold back a certain percentage of that, that they've requested, to assure that they take care of all the punch list items and things such as that. The deficiency that you've identified is that we didn't expense the full $100,000. We only expensed the, let's say, the $90,000, didn't expense the $10,000 that we're holding back because we wanted financial assurances that they would take care of any problems that might arise after the project, by their definition, might be done. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, then, as it relates to compliance, no material non-compliance noted. When we're looking at the federal programs, no findings related to our audit of the federal programs. One of the other things we do as part of the audit is make sure that the capital projects and sinking fund dollars that are expended during the year are done in accordance, not only with the ballot language, but also the state law that govern those dollars. And so, we do that on an annual basis. Happy to report no non-compliance as it relates to those expenditures. Because we've had two years of clean audits with no material weaknesses or significant findings, Huron Valley continues to qualify as a low-risk audit E. And there's a couple different benefits to qualifying as a low-risk audit E. It limits the amount of federal funding testing that we may have to do. If you weren't a low-risk audit E, there's likely more testing, higher cost to the audit for having to do more testing. You qualify as a low-risk audit E, and so there is, there are some benefits to that classification. And then finally, on this page, we tested the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the Education Stabilization Fund, both coronavirus-related funding, new to the district this year. Again, no findings, no issues with how those dollars were expended. Any questions? So, I mentioned unmodified opinion. Well, what's an unmodified opinion? What does that mean? That is the highest level that we, as auditors, can place on a set of financial statements. It used to be called, different words, the current wording is unmodified opinion. Again, that's the highest level of assurance that we can provide, that your financial statements are free of misstatement. So, now we're gonna talk a little bit about the dollars and the qualitative, quantitative results. So, this year, you had an increase in your net position, actually a decrease in the deficit of $14.3 million from June 30, 2020, to June 30, 2021. A significant part of that change is a result of what happened in the general fund. So, this year, in the general fund, your fund balance increased about $6.9 million, or it pretty much increased about 200%. Much of that increase is a result of the increase in federal funding that the district received. Keep in mind, that increase in federal funding, a lot of that is one-time funding, so it's not dollars that are gonna recur year over year. And so, when you're looking at budgeting and planning for the future, those aren't dollars that you can plan on recurring year after year. They really, most of them are just one-time revenue sources. The next page really summarizes some of those one-time dollars, so you can see totals about $6.1 million in the general fund. And we've looked back at the last graph, your increase in the fund balance in the general fund was 6.9. So, pretty close, that most of that increase in your fund balance is a result of that increase in one-time federal funding. So, this graph is summarizing the fund balance. We talked about the general fund, the left-hand column. So, you started with a $3.5 million fund balance in the general fund, increased by about $6.9 million to $10.4 million. The other columns summarize the fund balance activity in your special revenue funds, so food service, community schools, student activities, and International Academy West. One, one I want to highlight is community schools. So, this is a fund that we've talked about for a number of years. A few years ago, this had a pretty significant deficit. We're happy to report that this year, this fund has a $30,000 fund balance, which is a great result from where we were just a few years ago. Also happy to result, report that revenues and expenditures in this fund were pretty much the same. So, what used to be a pretty significant structural deficit has been resolved, and now revenues and expenditures are relatively close to the same amount. The increase in fund balance was really from a transfer from the general fund to take care of the rest of that deficit in that fund. So, that's really one of the high, things that we wanted to highlight as it relates to the financial results for this fiscal year. Are there any questions on that, or Jeffrey, anything else we want to point out on that?
No, I just think it should be noted that, you know, for the last couple of years, with the deficit that we were keeping in there, for them to turn a profit in the current year is very remarkable and something that Kim and her team should be very proud of.
So, the next graph summarizes the balance sheet. Again, in the general fund, you have about $26.4 million of assets. Two main categories, about $5.8 million in cash, and then about $16.6 million in receivables. A lot of that is your July and August state aid payment. Again, we've talked about this in the past. You earn your revenue by providing services to the students. The school year ended prior to your, end of your fiscal year, but the way that the state pays you, you get a state aid payment in July and August that really relates to the services that you've provided to the students, and so you get to accrue that as a receivable in this current fiscal year. On the expenditure side, about $16 million. Two main categories there are accrued payroll and related expenses of about $10.3 million. And you have a state aid note outstanding with a balance of about $4,950,000 at June 30th. Again, we come down to that same $10.4 million fund balance that we talked about on the previous graphs. On a combined basis, in the special revenue funds, about $3 million in assets, about $1.1 million in liabilities. You have about $1.8 million sitting in your debt service fund. And then in your capital projects fund, you have about $103 million of assets, most of that being your investments in your 2020 capital projects fund, and about $10.4 million of liabilities, most of that due to vendors as it relates to construction activity that's, that has occurred over the summer, beginning of the summer, and not been, not been paid. Any questions on that? So, finally, as it relates to numbers, this is a summary of the general fund revenues and expenditures over the last three years. If we could go to pages, thank you. So, I think the key items, a couple key items to look at here. Revenue went from $96 million to $98 million, up to about $108 million. So, you see, again, the results of that one-time federal funding. Revenue this year is up about $9.6 million in the general, or 9.6% in the general fund. When you look at expenditures, you went from $96.5 million to $99 million, to $100 million point, or $100,729,000. Expenditures only went up 1.6%. So, you have a 9.6% increase in revenue, a 1.6% increase in expenditures, and you could see the results. So, your net change in fund balance, or your profit in the general fund this year, is that $6.9 million compared to about a $900,000 loss or reduction in fund balance in the prior year. And you may recall, last year, we talked about, there was a state aid adjustment in August that really happened after the end of your fiscal year. That was the major cause of that $900,000 deficit in the prior year. So, a little more qualitative results of the audit. In the report to the, to the board, which is that third document we, I mentioned, we're required to make some communications in writing to the board. So, the results, or the responsibility of us, of Plant Moran, under the audit standards is to express an opinion on the financial statements, to look at your internal controls, and then to communicate any significant findings that we have as it relates to the audit process. So, some of those significant findings, there were no transactions entered into for what, which lacked authoritative guidance. One of the other things we're required to report on is accounting estimates. So, in the government-wide financial statements, the district's required to report the pension liability from the state of Michigan and your share of that. This year, that is about $234 million. Again, that is an estimate based on information that we've received from the state as to what Huron Valley's share of that liability is. But the combined pension and post-employment benefit liabilities are about $234 million. The disclosures in the financial statements are considered neutral, consistent, and clear. We did have one recommendation. So, there's been a lot of talk about, as it relates to capital outlay, and when districts are buying groups of assets, the treatment of how that has been accounted for has been inconsistent among districts and our governmental clients. And so, the accounting standards are coming out and saying, if you buy a bunch of small items, but it, in total, is over your capitalization policy, then you should be capitalizing it based on the combined purchase, not the amount of the individual purchases. So, think about if you went and bought 200 Chromebooks. Individually, that wouldn't be more than your capitalization policy, but in total, that purchase would be more than your capitalization policy. Under this new guidance, you should be capitalizing that. This next graph talks about the Headley dot, impact of the Headley on both the general fund and the building site fund over the last several years. As Superintendent talked about, this should be not a factor going forward with the positive vote results over the last couple of weeks. vote results over the last couple of weeks. The rest of our letter to the, to the board is informational items, so I won't read through the list that's on the next couple of pages, but there are, are a number of informational items in our reports to the board that we hope you would find interesting and will take the time to review. So that really wraps up my presentation. Just wanted to go back and just kind of summarize the key points. So again, unmodified opinion on both the financial statements and federal awards, no material weaknesses, the one significant deficiency we talked about, no material non-compliance, a clean federal awards audit, no non-compliance as it relates to capital projects and sinking fund expenditures, and Huron Valley will continue to qualify as a low-risk auditor. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. We've got a couple of questions here, just, I'm going to ask a couple here. So I just want verification, I know on page, I believe it's seven, there's a reference to the federal awards. I don't see S R three. Now, I believe that was in conflict up at the, up at the state and the federal level, so there wasn't any resolution by the time that this audit was done. So S R three funds are not reflected in this report, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to verify that, and, and I appreciate the work that Plant Moran has, has done and put this report together. It's important for us as a school board, of course, to be responsibly spending the bond dollars and the general fund dollars that, that the, the community has entrusted us to do, and it's always, I know sometimes that these aren't the most exhilarating presentations, but it is, it is part of our report card to the community on how we're balancing the books and how we're managing. So, I, I appreciate that. I see Jeffrey smiling under that mask.
You might have offended him when you said it wasn't exciting.
I'm not going to take that, I'm not going to take that personally, Board Member Carlson.
But I think Mr. Weissman has a few questions, Mr. Weissman.
Yeah, I think I'll make a comment to defend Jeffrey. I found it exhilarating as it related to this. But I think if you would, if you could put slide fourteen up again, I, I just have a couple of things I'd just like, as a board member, to reflect on. First of all, Mike, thank you for your report, thank you for the hard work, and your team, if you'd pass that on, on my behalf, I certainly respect the work that you've done. I think it's important to note that this is something that obviously an auditor is required by law, that we do on an annual basis, but these, these financial statements are really a report to the Board of Education. Board of Education hires Plant Moran, our external auditors, and they report back to us directly so that we can get assurances that our staff is doing what they need to do from a fiduciary standpoint, so that we can assure our public, who's really paying the bills, that things are being done in a proper fashion. So, thank you, Plant Moran, thank you, Jeffrey, and, and your entire staff for that. I think it's also, from a highlight standpoint, two items of assurances that, that I believe really need to be pointed. Not only have we received assurances that we've done what we're expected to do at a high, the highest level possible, but our, our citizens, a couple of years ago, entrusted us as it relates to a significant amount of dollars for a bond issue to retool our district and provide opportunities for our students. At that time, we said that these are state-qualified bonds, that we submit to the state exactly what we're going to be doing within these bonds, and then at the same time, we assured them that these dollars would not be spent on salaries or anything that would be inappropriate. And while these construction projects are going on, in the interim, on an annual basis, and this year being really the first, you've audited what has already been accomplished, and you found that everything that we have done complies with what we said was going to be done when we applied for these bonds originally, correct?
Correct.
The second piece is, and I really applaud our administration for this, the complexity as it relates to the, the, the funds that we receive from the federal government because of the pandemic. These rules are changing constantly, and, and our, our administration, along with Plant Moran as our partner, made certain that we did what we were expected to do, and from the two significant dollars, grants that we received, you've audited them, and we have assurances that we, we have spent those dollars in a, in a fashion that the government told us that we needed to do to support the pandemic and to provide opportunities for our students and staff. Is that, that's also correct?
That is correct.
So I, so I absolutely applaud and respect that, that work. So, those are the only, really, the two, two or three reflections that, that I had on this. I think you brought out the fact that those dollars that we received were one-time-only monies, that our fund balance might be high right now, but that was because of one-time-only, and as we plan for the future, how do we use those one-time-only dollars to benefit our, our staff and our students? And I know we've had a lot of discussion with our finance team and our board as it relates to what it's going to look like over the next couple of years. So, once again, thank you very much, Mike and your team, and thank you, Jeffrey, along with the entire administration for the work that you've done. I appreciate it and respect it.
Thank you, Mr. Weissman. Ms. Dodd.
I just want to make sure the general public out there knows that they can look at these reports. They're not up there yet, but they live on our website for many, many years in the past, and I'm sure these reports will be up there as soon as we're able. It's at hvs.org/district/business-schoolfinance. So, anybody sitting at home who's just wondering what was on page fourteen, eventually you'll be able to go on our website and peruse these on your own.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd, Ms. Pastana.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted, as Treasurer, I wanted to thank you for your presentation at Finance and Operations and here tonight, and I just wanted you to know, Michael, you and Jenny have done some really good work for us, and we are really appreciative of it, of all your service and professionalism, and I just want to let you know that it's really important that you reckon, or that we recognize what you guys have done for us, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item four, items from the board. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. Board Member Dodd.
I just will say congratulations to, hold on, I gotta pull up the right email, to the Huron Valley High School Vocal Music Program that went to the Michigan School Vocal Music Association Soul and Ensemble this weekend. There were a lot of kids, let's say seven or eight of them, all of them received Division One ratings, and these kids are also currently working on a musical and doing a lot of other things. So, congratulations to those students, and nice job, Milford High School, for your continued legacy in the performing arts.
All right, thank you, Ms., Mr. Long.
Nothing this evening.
All right, Ms. Forrest.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Weissman.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. All right, we have a student leader here tonight from Milford High School, Fletcher Smith. I'd like to welcome you to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Fletcher Smith, and I'm a senior at Milford High School. At Milford, I'm involved in a variety of different activities. I serve as the Student Council President, the President of the National Art Society, a member of DECA, and a captain of the Huron Valley United varsity swim team. After almost a year and a half of being in a very unfamiliar learning environment, I, along with my fellow students, are all extremely glad to be back in person full-time for the 2021-2022 school year. However, it also needs to be recognized that for some students, the transition to full-in-person schooling will be tough. The Milford High School administration team recognizes this challenge, is making it one of its key priorities to promote the health and well-being of students in this transition. One way, one way this is being accomplished is through weekly after-school tutoring events. Every other Monday after school and during all seminars, members of the National Art Society help their fellow students fill knowledge gaps that may have arisen during the virtual learning period. Another new addition in Milford High School this year is the Mavericks in Training Program. With this program, members of the Milford High School Leadership Class spend one seminar period every month building connections with the freshman students through various activities. Now I'll move to some of the highlights of, now I'll move to some of the highlights of the results of the Activities Arts and Athletics Survey that was conducted among the student population in Milford last month. In the survey, students were posed questions regarding their involvement with extracurricular activities, the amount of extracurricular activities offered at Milford, and how they felt they were able to balance their academic agenda with their extracurricular activities. In this survey, we found that seventy percent of students regularly find themselves participating in extracurricular activities, and that sixty-five percent of students regularly participate in extracurriculars. Another notable figure was that eighty percent of students feel that extracurricular offerings at Milford help them feel more connected to the Milford High School community. We also found that many students desired an, an increase in extracurricular offerings. Some of the clubs that students would like to see added are Cooking Club, a Model UN Club, and a Debate Club. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you, Fletcher, for being here. Are there any questions from the board for, for Mr. Smith? Thank you for being here. All right, association comment, Ms. Hollander.
Tonight, we honored our brave men and women of our armed services. Huron Valley has a long tradition of honoring our service members, and each year, I'm in awe of all the names that are read at the board meeting and moved at the Veterans Day ceremonies in many of our schools. This year, I was at Muir Middle School on Friday and was fortunate to be able to present at their, to be present at their Veterans Day Assembly. Students and staff were riveted when hearing stories from our veterans. We were inspired by their bravery and moved by their heroism. They shared the importance of valuing our freedom, respecting others, and most of all, a sense of camaraderie and being a person that others can rely on. My father-in-law turned ninety-eight last June. He is a World War II veteran with a Purple Heart. After he left the Army, he was an engineer for NASA, and for the last many years of his career, was a high school math teacher in Detroit. A few years ago, he spoke at Muir's Veterans Day Assembly. He talked about the honor of being able to defend his country and the freedoms that are important to all of us. He feels so fortunate that throughout his lifetime, he has the honor of both serving his country and teaching our youth. The men and women we honor tonight are inspiring, not only for their time in the armed services, but also for the impact on our students and families and community once they've returned home. So on behalf of the Huron Valley Education Association, I thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollander. Without objection, we're going to just take a brief recess. Regular board meeting is called back into session. We are on item seven, public comment, agenda items. I do have three citizen participation forms. None of them are agenda item-related, so we will, we will get those items at section twelve. All right, we'll now go to reports from the committee, the executive committee, and try to move quickly through this. I know the executive committee minutes are, are published, but I'm just going to give some highlights here. The committee met on November eighth at nine-thirty. This committee went till twelve noon. We had a couple of items. We discussed the regular board meeting agenda at that time, superintendent goals. We had a Title IX update from Ms. Glover-Payne, who shared the updated policy and administrative procedures for the Title IX policy revisions. We also talked about bond work. The committee discussed some general bond updates and a focus for the next steps at the high school level. NEOLA, which is a group that helps school boards all across the state of Michigan, and the country for that matter, with board policy and, and updates, and we had a conversation with NEOLA in regards to supporting HVS, in regards to policy revisions for, for the school district, and then we also got a tech update from- And then we also got a tech update from Mr. Tavernear, who was reviewing the need for additional technology support due to increased workload due to the bond. So, so those were the discussions, and like I said, it says adjournment here at 11:00 AM, but that was not the case. We adjourned at 12. Yes. So, and that, in, present for that meeting was Tom Weisman, Denise Forrest, myself, John Tavernear, Dr. Salah, Jeffrey Van Goghtham, and Relisha Glover. All right, we will now move to TLT Committee.
All right, TLT, we had our meeting on November 5th at 10:00 AM in the Administration Building. We called it to order at 10:01. Present were myself, Lindsay Cotter, John Tavernear, Dr. Salah, Jennifer Bjorkman, Martin Lindberg, Lena Nemeth, Terry Thompson, Dr. Jessica Cohen, and Paul Twig. We did not have any public comment. Our regular agenda items, we talked about the ESAR budget review. Mrs. Bjorkman reviewed allowable expenditures for the ESAR III grant allocation. We also discussed the Board of Education awards. We discussed the intent of the, of the board and the need for review. It's recommended that the administration review with the emphasis on equity and well-rounded opportunities for all students. Administration will develop a small work group to begin recommendations and bring that back to the committee. Under Other, we talked about a technology update. We provided an overview of some technology upgrades being recommended tonight during, oh, hold on, in the consent agenda, and the TLT Committee supports this technology purchase. We discussed the Board Policy Resolution 5127. A resolution was passed last year by the Board of Ed to waive the MME requirement for the class of 21. There are many students in the class of 22 who have not completed the MME due to the pandemic. Administration is recommending this, a similar resolution be considered. With support, a new draft resolution will be presented to the committee at the next meeting. It will also, it was also requested a review of the MMC be brought to the next meeting. On the consent agenda items, the MyPeer, the TLT Committee supported the annual MyPeer Payroll Finance Software Fees, and they'll be on the consent agenda. Future Review Committee, Mrs. Cotter asked for clarification of the process utilized in the selection of furniture by the Furniture Review Committee. Mrs. Dodd brought up snow days. The community discussed the implication of snow days on the HVVA, and that was resolved with a communication sent out last week. We adjourned at 11:14 AM. Hot off the presses, our next meeting will be November 19th, this Friday at 8:30 AM at the Administration Building. Usually, these are at 10, but we're moving this one to 8:30 AM.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Treasurer Pastana.
Yes, Finance and Operations met on Wednesday, November 10th. We, at the Administration Building, there were no public comment. Present were myself, Mr. Weisman, Dr. Salah, Mr. Van Goghtham, Mr. Tavernear, Mr. Reby, Ms. Kerrigan, Ms. Maruskin, Becky Timberlake, Don Rogers from Clark Construction, Bill from TMP, Paul Twig, Jenny and Michael from Plant Moran. We reviewed the minutes. We talked about the consent agenda items. The results of the annual financial audit by Plant Moran were complete. Everybody saw it presented tonight. We have placed a link to the financial audit documents on the website. We are asking the board to approve the following nine vendors to supply custodial products during the year to the district in the amount of $225,000 for the fiscal year. All American Poly, Allied Eagle Supply, Arnold Sales, JEM Industries, Nichols Papers and Supply, School Specialty and Supply Den. These expenditures are budgeted in the General Fund. We also talked about the MyPeer software renewal and recommended that the board approve the software fees for the fiscal year of '21, '22 for $91,631.25. Funds for this purchase are allocated in the Fed, in the General Fund. There was no unfinished business. New Business, Paul Twig presented an overview of technology solutions proposed as well as costs and budget estimates for discussion. In Other, we had a construction bond update. Don Rogers shared updated photos, remaining components and scope of work to be done, along with a contingency update to wrap up Bid PAC 4 by the end of 2021. Becky Timberlake gave us a review of Bid PAC 5 opening. Jeffrey noted that our service providers' efforts making calls and getting the bids were successful due to proactively getting out there earlier and as a result, having good bid coverage. Pricing remains at all-time high. Clark Construction will be setting up post-bid vetting and interviews to prepare for the next phase, including contract awards at the December 13th Board Meeting. Future discussion items. The committee agreed to move our December Finance and Operation Meeting from December 1st to December 8th, due to the board meeting being moved to the 12th. We will discuss Bid PAC 5 results. We discussed a potential furniture offering from a business, a local business owner. Mr. Weisman also suggested contacting a demolition company to see if they can salvage any furniture so that we can satisfy our due diligence to the community. Jeffrey will document final procedures with a memo to be included. Jeffrey will have a three-boxer for tonight's meeting to accelerate the process of purchasing cafeteria tables for Milford High School. An approved purchase from the 2020 bond, these tables have reached end of life. There was a discussion regarding flags at each building that Mr. Long brought up, and Jeffrey will follow up with Mr. Long. Mr. Weisman would like an inventory taken on the Johnson Elementary exterior lighting to make sure exit and classroom doors are all properly lit at dark. That's also Mr. Long brought up. Meeting was adjourned at 12:00 PM. Next meeting, December 8th at 10:00 AM.
Thank you, Treasurer Pastana. Communications, Marketing, and Legislative, Mr. Long.
Communications, Marketing, and Legislative met on November 5th in the Administrative Building. The meeting was called to order at 8:36 PM. Present were Lindsay Cotter, Laura Dodd, Kim Root, Dr. Paul Salah, Relisha Glover-Payne, and Laura Colvin. I apologize to the committee for my absence that day. I had some personal business to take care of. There was also one parent in the audience. There was no public comment. On the regular agenda, Mrs. Root shared results from the district's non-Homestead village, as shared in Board Notes and seen tonight in the presentation. It was also noted that some of the vote "no" signs that were placed near precincts were a violation of Michigan election laws because they contain no paid-for-by-disclaimer. We got a website update from Laura Colvin, who's given to the community, an overview of the HVS website and application set to launch on Tuesday, November 30th. HVS has contracted with the vendor Apogee for website construction. Engagement with the application will occur through a drip campaign designed to build momentum. The app is now live and available at the App Store or in the Google Play Store if you would like to preview it. Please note, the content is not yet completed, so we are not yet advertising this to the public. It will be fully functional by the launch date. Ms. Root provided an overview of her functional area goals for 2021 school year, and the meeting was adjourned at 9:36 AM. Our next meeting is December 3rd at 8:30 AM.
All right, the AAA Committee, Ms. Forrest.
Yes, this will be a very short report. We have not met since our last board meeting, and our next meeting will be on November 29th at 4:30 PM, Huron Valley School Board Office. That's it.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to Section 9, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Exhibits A1 through A7?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Pastana. We'll now move to a roll call vote.
Thank you. Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pastana?
Yes.
And Ms. Cotter is a yes? Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mrs. Forrest?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to Item 10, Unfinished Business. We have 10A, HVS, MSC Contract Exhibit B. Let me, first, are we looking for motions to pass this, this evening?
Yes.
If we are, then I need a motion and support it. I got a motion from Mr. Weisman. Do I have support? And I have support from Ms. Dodd. So we will now, I'll turn this over to the Superintendent for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have, we actually have three handbook groups here for you this evening. One is SMC, which is our supervisors and coordinators. The second is our foremen's managers and technicians, and the third is the executive assistant to the superintendent. As is customary, the board received a summary sheet last week, Thursday, with your board packet. These handbooks are consistent with the same terms and conditions that we've brought forward with the teachers group as well as the, the administration group for both A and B, and the executive assistant to the superintendent is consistent with what has been brought forth for the, for the hats, which is our executive secretaries.
Thank you. Can I get just a rough idea, how many personnel are we talking about on Item A, B, and C? I think C is one, correct?
C is one. Supervisors, coordinators, how many do we have in that group, Ms. Glover-Payne? Roughly? 10, 15?
Okay.
And then foremen's managers and technicians? I'd say, geez, 20, 30? 25, 30? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board on Item A?
No, I was just for clarity, since Dr. Salah reviewed all three, would those be considered one motion and we could approve all of them?
We're going to take them separate. So we have a motion on the table for Exhibit B right now, and we'll take each one separately.
Okay.
But we got the update on, on all three. Are there any other questions as it relates to Exhibit B, unfinished business subsection A? Seeing none, we'll now move to a roll call vote.
Thank you. Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Forrest?
Yes.
Mrs. Pastana?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter is a yes. President Carlson?
Yes.
That motion is passed.
Motion passes. We'll now entertain a motion for subsection B, Exhibit C. That motion by Ms. Forrest, do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Cotter. Any follow-up questions for administration? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Thank you. Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter is a yes. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Pastana?
Yes.
President Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes too.
All right, we'll now move to subsection C, Exhibit D, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent. And if I could make that motion, I certainly would. She is awesome.
I'm going to support it.
Who made the motion? Ms. Pastana? And then supported by Ms. Cotter. Any, any questions regarding this? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Pastana.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter is a yes. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Forrest?
Yes.
President Carlson?
The strongest yes you could possibly have. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to New Business, Section 11, Superintendent Proposed Goals, Exhibit E.
Thank you again, Mr. President. If we could pull up that presentation. So I've got a few slides here. Shared this in Board Notes on two different occasions, once about a month ago, and just in terms of process for our listening audience. Since I've started here in Huron Valley Schools, this is technically my fourth school year, my third, finishing my, my third year as superintendent. We've, we've made some tweaks to the, to the process with, with which that my goals are adopted. And so if we go to the next slide, it really speaks to that process. And so that process is really designed to be systemic and to create alignment across and throughout the entire school district, ensuring that my goals align with COAT's goals, which align with our building administrators and our department, and our department heads. And so that's, for our listening audience, what you're seeing up there is, is that flow. I've already shared my goals with the board through Board Notes on two different occasions. We've had conversations during the Executive Committee, and the Executive Committee has provided me with some feedback and some high-level suggestions in terms of how I might tweak, tweak a couple of those goals. The Executive Committee, you know, following, following suit from last school year, also asked that I take two or three of those goals and convert them into SMART goals. SMART goals are what we call a specific, measurable, attainable, time, time-bound, and reportable. So, yeah, I can miss the letter in there, didn't I? So, so I've done that, and that was also included in your board packet last week on, on Thursday. And so where we're at today in the process is I'm asking the board to support the goals that I'm going to walk through here as well as, as well as the, the SMART goals. I've already asked the COAT team to draft their goals. We're a little, a little late here in, in actually getting to this part of the presentation just because we're living through another year of challenges associated with the pandemic, and time has been, time has been a challenge. So if we could move to the next slide, this is not, this next slide is not going to look surprising to anyone on the board. From when I started in the organization, all the way back from when I interviewed with the organization, I talked about a systems approach to, to successful school environments. And this graphic is a representation of really a synthesis of what the educational research says. The educational research over the last 30 years has continued to say the same things over and over again. And as I've read and continued my own learning, it appeared to me as, as really more of a picture. And so the picture you're seeing, if you envision a flight of stairs, you, you cannot get to the top of a flight of stairs by simply jumping to the top. There are key, key steps and ingredients that make up successful school environments. And so my team and I have, have talked about these steps for the last three years, probably to the point where they're tired of me talking about it and showing this diagram. The first step is culture, climate. It's how we do things around here, and it really is where the professional learning community work was born from, that we implemented just prior to the pandemic. The second stair step is ensuring that across Huron Valley Schools, that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which means that all second graders in Huron Valley Schools are exposed to the same scope and sequence, the same Michigan standards, so that whether you're at Highland or Lakewood or Oxbow, and you're in a second grade classroom, you know, within a, within a couple of weeks, you're going to be moving through that pacing guide at, at the relative, relatively the same speed, so that we ensure every child is getting exposure to a high-quality, guaranteed and viable curriculum. The third is, how do we measure whether or not students are, are yielding the outcomes that we want them to? And that's where this PLC work is so critically important. It's teachers coming together every single week and having conversations about what is going well with the instruction and the pedagogy in their classrooms on a week-to-week basis, and using data, whether that's formative assessment data, whether it's common assessment data, whether it's district assessment data, or benchmarks, or diagnostic tools. It's, it's determining whether or not students are learning to the extent that we need them to learn, and then if they're not, it's the fourth step. It's, it's what are we doing to enrich and intervene? So kids who have, who have mastered the content, how are we challenging them further? And kids who are really struggling with the content, how are we intervening on their behalf? So if we move to the next step, that's really hard, like in a normal school year. Like, that's really, really challenging work, just in, in the context of a normal, everyday kind of a school year. What we've seen this year are challenges with social-emotional that are having a direct impact on a child's ability to learn. What we're seeing this year, I like Fletcher's words, actually, I wrote them down. What we're seeing this year are knowledge gaps. I think I like that better than learning loss. I'm going to adopt that, I think. These knowledge gaps that exist because some of our kids, when the pandemic hit, you know, they were, they were seventh graders, and now they're in high school, and they just have no idea how to and they just have no idea how to really be a high school student. You know, and so, and you know, I've heard that from some of our high school teachers that are that are working with kids every single day. And I've heard that from our elementary teachers that are saying, I have a second grader that was never a kindergartner, and so they really don't know how to be a second grader. They're still operating like like they are a kindergartner. And so, because we didn't have that just continuity and consistency, we're dealing with quarantines and all the pieces that that we're plagued with. This this goal, this goal one, is really around refocusing on our PLC efforts, you know, doubling down on what we learned a couple of years ago, identifying the gaps that exist in order to 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 design and establish transparent tier one expectations. And you're already seeing some of that in the Atlas work our TLT department has launched, and being fully transparent and really publishing that curriculum, so that anybody that has questions about the curriculum we teach, it's on our website. Anybody in the community can go and look at at what it is that we teach within a one to two week timeframe. We started with English and math, and we're continuing to make progress in that direction. We're establishing a robust data culture designed to continue our commitment to teaching and learning as we emerge from the pandemic. And again, this is not another, it's a it's yet again, not a normal school year, but I'm confident that we are moving in the right direction despite the many challenges that we've faced. So if we move to the next goal, Dr. Sala will continue to work with the TLT department towards program enhancement and refinement as we emerge from the global pandemic. I would draw your attention to the SMART goals that you received last week. And this one really speaks to program enhancement and focusing at the at the middle school level and building upon advanced placement classes, preparing students in the middle school level for the the range of advanced placement offerings that we have at the high school level, as well as, you know, the International Academy West. For those of you in our listening audience who aren't aware, we actually have the second highest performing school in the world within Huron Valley Schools. It's called the International Academy West. It's part of a three campus model. We're very proud of of that that school and what we do for the 330 students that that attend there. There's a real opportunity to expand that thinking into the middle school level. And so one of my charges to the TLT team, so long as the board approves the school, will be that we focus in that area and move towards looking at almost like a middle years program for our international academy. And moving on, focus on identification opportunities for operational efficiencies and revenue enhancements that align with the district's needs as we emerge through the global pandemic. This is another one that I've converted into a SMART goal, and it goes into much more detail. My fourth goal is continue leading through the global pandemic. As much as I would like this to not be a goal, it continues to be pretty consuming. I'd say I'd spend at least 35 to 40% of my time dealing with COVID related issues, whether they be, you know, the upcoming mandates from the federal government related to vaccines and testing to, you know, wrecking, sort of maneuvering the guidance as it relates to quarantines and close contacts and things of that nature. So frankly, my entire team is is spending probably far too much time on this than than we'd like to. And then last but not least, is continuing to lead through successful completion of bond and building site, thinking of projects. We learned a lot last year about the importance of how we communicate as we as we work our way, not only through the projects, but after the projects, as we're dealing with punch lists and things not being complete. And this will be even more important next year as a result of the continued labor shortages that exist in the the construction market, as well as the supply chain shortages that we've we've been told are going to create some challenges and hiccups for us as we move into next school year. So that is a high level overview. Mr. President, I'm happy to go into any any detail if you'd like, or answer any questions, or if you'd like me to touch more so on the SMART goals, I'm happy to do that as well.
I'll just open it up for questions at this time. Any any questions? Mr. Weisman?
Yes, I'd just comment, I'd like to, you've provided to us the the SMART goals. I appreciate that as a as an addendum to the goals that you've presented. I think it gives us a little more clarity as it as it relates to those goals. And I look forward to the progress throughout the course of the year.
Any other comments or questions, Ms. Forrest?
Thank you, Dr. Sala, for that. And I do appreciate you taking a deeper dive. You're you're always diving deep. I appreciate you really fleshing out your goals to turn some of these into SMART goals. I think now more than ever, it's real important that we have some definite goals, benchmarks, and clarity as we move forward, like you said, through this pandemic and out of this pandemic, into what's really important, which is teaching and learning here in Huron Valley. So thank you for your leadership.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes, just a comment about the goals. They're very well organized. I appreciate that. I can see how they're focused on your whole COAT team, and how those are going to filter down to our administration and eventually go to the classroom. So they're very well organized as as the goal should be for the whole district. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll just like to echo that and also echo the importance of that goal one. We've seen that for the last couple of years. Obviously, COVID hijacked, you know, some of the progress that was being made. But I know you and and the COAT team and the principals and administration are working hard to get that back online. And I think that that's very important and to stay consistent with that. So I'm appreciative of that as well. If there are no other questions, I'd like to entertain a motion. Mr. Weisman?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's goals as presented.
Support.
All right, a motion's been made by Mr. Weisman and supported by Mr. Long. Any questions in regards to that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter is a yes. Mrs. Forrest?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Pistana?
Yes.
President Carlson?
Yes. All right. Seven voted yes, a sufficient number voting in the affirmative. Motion
passes. We'll now move to cafeteria tables. Milford High School, exhibit F.
Mr. Van Goghtham?
I know everybody was on the edge of their seat waiting for this part of the presentation, so happy to, happy to report that as part of the 2020 bond, we had a furniture and equipment item that was approved through our bond application. These particular tables, as you can see in here, are are past end of life. So Milford High School reached out to us to see if we could bump up the purchase of those tables. So we did put the furniture group as part of our cooperative that we started two years ago, and received bids bids on those, and came up with a reasonable quote from Duell Corporation for the the price that you see in your program. So this is new business, so just wanted to leave it up there for the board to take a look at. And we can have it moved to unfinished in December, where we can ultimately approve them and have them available for Milford as soon as they're available for distribution.
Mr. Van Goghtham, so is there any timing issue here? I mean, we could certainly come back at the middle of December and and vote and approve this. But I know with supply chain and delivery issues, do we want to take a potentially a motion tonight and approve this so that they can be ordered?
We can. I mean, we were trying to follow a board protocol of new and unfinished, but I'd be happy if you approved them tonight. We can get started on ordering, since it is taking a while for them to get through supply chain. But I'll leave it up to the board.
And we receive quotes, we've got competitive pricing there, so. But I'll I'll leave it up to the board whether they would like to move forward. Ms. Cotter?
Yes, I'd like to move forward and propose a motion to accept the bid regarding the new tables for Milford High School.
Support.
That motion made by Ms. Cotter, supported by Mr. Long. Are there any questions in regards to that? Any concerns about moving forward tonight with this motion? Ms. Forrest?
I just follow up on the supply chain and, you know, reasonable expectation for when, after, you know, we order them, when we would get them? Do they have an idea?
Yeah, so it would probably be anywhere between 10 and 12 weeks for our due time, unfortunately, just due to the to the steel shortage, as well as, you know, the supply chain availability. So by voting tonight, it will help the process of getting those tables to the school as soon as possible.
Okay, that seems reasonable. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move for a vote.
Thank you. Ms. Cotter is a yes. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Forrest?
Yes.
Mrs. Pistana?
Yes.
And President Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, sufficient voting in the affirmative. Motion passes. We'll now move to website rebuild.
That's that's Ms. Rutt.
That's Ms. Rutt making her way to the podium.
Good evening, again. Really, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce my colleague, Laura Colvin. We've been talking about the website for about 18 months now. This is a very heavy lift. You know, pre pandemic, we thought that we might be ahead of this schedule. But nonetheless, here we are, closing in in a couple of weeks before our launch. And so some of this information you've heard, but we wanted to give you a summary of where we are right now, and again reaffirm that launch. And so I'm going to invite Laura to come up and walk through the presentation for the board.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, members of the board, COAT, and the community. Thank you for allowing me some time tonight to present the new HVS website. So if we could start on that first slide there. Of course, I can't quite see it, so I'm just going to look over here. So we're going to just recap the early stages and and goals. Some of you have heard this before, but our goal was to build a modern communications tool that would effectively inform and engage our audiences. We worked with a lot of stakeholders to develop a diverse committee. We reviewed our current website, other websites, and developed an RFP. Our committee conducted interviews. We had three qualified bidders. We conducted interviews with all of them, and ultimately, we chose Aptige. We liked Aptige for many reasons. They offered unlimited training for users, ease of use, an annual site refresh, and they put a strong emphasis on the mobile app, which you're going to see in just a couple of minutes here. Next slide. So we had a kickoff meeting with Aptige in late June, followed by many, many, many additional meetings. We spent time taking photos around the district and recruiting other photographers. I'm very happy to say we have the very talented Tara Johnson on board. She's been out doing quite a bit of shooting for us already, and has even, you know, sent me, I think, a thousand photos today. So we've had discussions with department heads about improving pages. We've been removing and editing outdated pages. We've had lots of those, creating calendars for each building, developing a style sheet for district wide branding and consistency, so that everybody everybody's looks the same across the board. You know, we're using the same style. And of course, building and designing pages. Michael, if you want to take us to that link down there, we'll walk right through it. So this is the new HVS homepage. Okay, so starting at the top, it's our goal to have have beautiful photos up there of our students and staff. These, the plan is to update these very often, so we don't get into that rut of seeing the same photos up there for a long time. Michael, if you could scroll down a little bit, we've got in that blue strip there, we've got easy access to the most popular wants and needs. Now, those aren't finalized yet, but those are some of the ones we're we're thinking of. You know, the most popular wants and needs when people come to our website, what they're looking for. In the next module there, we've got news, which, you know, as a former journalist myself, I love this setup for the news. I think it's compelling and engaging. It pulls your eye right to it. You know, it's it has the opportunity to showcase lots of beautiful photos again, and really to showcase whatever we happen to have going on in the district. Scroll down a little bit more. These are, we've got the district calendar up there right now. And all our schools are going to follow essentially the same format. You know, they'll have different, obviously, they'll have different events in there, their own thing, but it's going to follow basically the same format. So those those pages are engaging and beautiful as well. And then if you could scroll down again, you can see in the live feed, I've already been able to post our visit, well, not that one, but the next one, from our our veteran visit today. I'm going to tell you about about this feature. It's called Thrill Share. I'm going to tell you about this in a couple of slides. So that's our that's our live feed. Really, we can think of this as sort of our own social media platform, where I can be posting this right from here in the meeting, and it's going to show up on our website. And it's also going to show up in in another place, too, which we'll show you in a minute. So scroll down a little bit. These are, I'll head change that to, they're not exactly fun facts right now, but points of pride might be a better way to call these. And then down a little bit more, what we're thinking right now is to have Huron Valley Heroes that we that we showcase at every board meeting. We're thinking this is a good place to continue to, you know, show them off and let the community know about the great things that are that we're that we're doing here in our staff that, you know, doing a great job and being honored is Huron Valley Heroes. And I think, yep, so the next slide. Okay, so here is our new app. So we're going to just play a little video for you here. And Michael, go ahead and cue that up if you would.
Introducing the brand new app for Huron Valley Schools on Android and iPhone. It's everything Huron Valley Schools in your pocket. This is the home screen. Tap the schools icon in the bottom right to select a specific school. Tap the three horizontal lines in the bottom left to see all the menu items. To turn on push notifications, tap settings and select push notifications. The events section shows a list of events throughout the school. You can use this button to add an event to your calendar, or tap here to share the event with friends and family. The feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on throughout the school, whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search Huron Valley Schools in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. It's everything Huron Valley Schools in your pocket.
So for anyone who hasn't done so yet, if you would like to to go to your Google Play or Apple Store and download that, feel free. Take a minute to do that. And while you're doing that, we'll move on to the next slide, which kind of explains it all.
Introducing.
Next one. So Thrill Share is a publishing platform that that allows this communication between our website and the app. Basically, this allows us to update all of our communication channels at once, so we can reach school and community members wherever they are. So some people aren't on Facebook. So if you look at these little, this little bar here, we can post from one place to Facebook, Twitter, live feed, push notification, text, and voice call. So if Dr. Sala calls a snow day, I can I can put it in right there, and it's it's out everywhere, all from all at once. If Dr. Sala calls a snow day while I'm out on the sledding hill, I can pull out my phone. I can also post from there. I can put it all in, send it out, and it's out. So I think that's that's going to be really convenient. The post can be made through the website or the mobile app. It really does allow for better experience for both our staff and community. Did you guys all find the app? Everybody found it? Okay, next slide, website coordinators. Everybody found it? Okay, next slide, website coordinators. So this has been a huge lift so far. We recognize it's going to continue to be a huge lift because we're really set on making sure that this stays fresh and current all the time. And so we've identified one person from each building who will serve as a web coordinator. Each will have some, some basic but really important responsibilities to keep their own pages updated, you know, keep the photos fresh, keep their calendars updated, make sure their pages don't get outdated, and so on and so forth. Then we've also identified department liaisons who will keep their department pages updated at central office. Next slide. I would be remiss not to, not to touch on some accessibility. It's built in across our website and app to ensure ADA compliance. There's some examples there, but it really goes much deeper than that. And then if anybody has questions on that, we can, we can talk about that anytime. Next slide. And then finally, marketing. Aptogy has provided us with a client success manager. That's our friend Michael right there, who sees me probably every day. They're based in Arkansas. Our marketing includes a drip campaign, which basically means you're getting little drips of information for the next two or three weeks or so. We're not going to push it all out at once. We're just going to give them little pieces of information so they build excitement and momentum as we go toward the launch. We have posters, sample Facebook posts, videos in English, Spanish, and Arabic. Our website also translates to languages seamlessly. We'll be ready to launch on November 30th. And once again, the ongoing commitment to keeping this website fresh and updated and relevant all the time. That's, do I have questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Laura, for that presentation, and I'm looking forward to this. I know you jokingly said we've seen some of those pictures. I think some of those kids may have graduated
I'm pretty sure.
From college, so.
Pretty sure.
So anyways, do I have any questions or comments, Ms. Dodd?
So I've been along on this ride with you for a little bit, and just congratulations. This is a huge lift, and the fact that you were able to get that done and start a new school year and do all of this is very impressive. And I'm also just absolutely thrilled that you selected folks from each of our schools to help maintain content. And it isn't necessarily, we're saying this person or this teacher, that we selected the person in the schools who is most comfortable and excited about helping.
Correct.
And I think that that's wonderful, and I really appreciate the fact that we are compensating them for participating in this. So all around excellent work. Thank you very much. And up until today, I thought the app was secret. Now we get to tell everybody, and that's pretty exciting.
We do have to keep in mind that it's, I mean, we have a little under construction thing on there so that.
Hence the drip, drip, drip.
Yes, yes, yes.
Vice President Forrest.
Sure. Thank you, guys, for your steadfast work on this. I've been looking forward to this for a very long time and updating our website. And I know it is a ton of work from what you see to the back end and all of that. So kudos. And, you know, I pulled the app up and ready to roll. And I know it's going to be a fair amount of work to maintain this, you know, at the building level. So, you know, I'm glad you selected folks that want to do it. And it might not be a lifetime commitment for them. They could rotate perhaps because I, because I know keeping stuff fresh in this real-time world is sometimes a challenge. But again, kudos. This is fabulous.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
So I just, Mr. Carlson, if you don't mind, I did want to just, again, thank Laura. At the beginning of this project, I asked Laura to make herself the expert on the, on the new website. And that was a daunting task for, for this kind of a project. And she has done that, exceeded expectations on making herself an expert. And I also wanted to thank my colleague John Taverneer, who sat with us for a couple hours the other day and just is helping us fine tune some of the backend of this because John has the depth of knowledge that neither Laura nor I have. And so really lends his expertise to making sure that this transition is a seamless transition.
Thank you, Ms. Rutt. All right, we'll now move to item D, Board Policy 4100, Exhibit H. I would turn that one over to Ms. Glover-Payne.
Good evening, board. It's been a couple of months since.
Can we get the definition of this policy? Do you have?
I'm, I'm sorry.
The definition?
The definition?
Yeah, of the board policy, just for the community.
This is Title I.
Okay.
Excuse me, Title IX and 41 Board Policy 4100 and Board Policy 5116 that I'm going to discuss.
Okay.
In the board packet that you received last Thursday, you were provided with current language as it relates to 4100 and 5116. You received the current language and you also received the proposed language as it relates to 5116 and 4100. There is a distinction between the two policies, and I just want to, to make sure we're clear on what those distinction or that distinction is between the two. 4100 pretty much outlines the discrimination and harassment policy. This policy is for all alleged discrimination and harassment complaints other than sexual harassment. So that is the distinction. When we start talking a little bit more about the 5116 Board Policy, that is only specific to sexual harassment. But in Board Policy 4100, the proposed language provides greater detail as far as the district's commitment to following law and regulations prevent or prohibiting these acts. Administrative Procedure 4100 doesn't exist in our current Board Policy, so we needed to implement and adopt some language that speaks to how we are going to process a complaint when it comes in, specific to discrimination harassment policy, or excuse me, harassment complaints. The proposed procedure outlines the steps that will, that the district will take, and it also identifies the Chief Human Resources Officer as the compliance officer for any harassment or, excuse me, discrimination complaints that come in. Different from sexual harassment complaints, you don't have the multiple layers of staff involvement for discrimination harassment complaint. As compliance officer, I will serve as the investigator and decision maker if there is a complaint filed with the district. Title IX laws changed in 2020, and this is where 5116 comes in and why we needed to make some changes relative to the new Title IX laws. The new provisions mandate schools or education programs that receive federal funds, they must operate the education program or activity in a non-discriminatory manner, free of discrimination based on sex, including sexual orientation and gender identity. There have been terms that have been changed with the new law. So a person who files a complaint, they are considered the complainant. The person who the charge is filed against is the respondent. We have an investigator. We have a decision maker. And so in the Board Policy, what those steps will be when we investigate a complaint or a sexual harassment complaint, they are outlined in Administrative Procedure 5116. And 5116, there are multiple layers. You have multiple staff involved in this. In this particular Board Policy, I serve as Title IX Coordinator, where I am organizing the process, making sure that timelines are met, identifying who will be the staff members involved in investigating a complaint of sexual harassment. The decision maker will fall with Assistant Superintendent or Superintendent Designee. And the responsibility of that, or of that falls with, with who I've just said, sorry, the Assistant Superintendent or Designee. If there is an appeal that is launched by the claimant or the respondent, then that appeal goes to the superintendent, where he would make a decision on, on the claimant's appeal that submitted. So having appeals go directly to the superintendent is something that we've discussed with our attorney and felt that that was the best place where appeals should land, because it also, as far as superintendent making decisions such as this, there are some legal protections that, that a superintendent has related to any decisions made regarding sexual harassment.
Okay, we just took on Board Policy 4100 and 5116, correct? All right, so are there any questions or comments? This is for our first reading tonight. We will not be voting on either one of these policies, but Ms. Cotter?
Yeah, I guess my only question is, I read them before I came tonight. There's a lot of red in the second, was it the second one? And that's all been cleared with our attorneys. This is the new language that's appropriate by law.
That is correct. Because of the new change in law, we needed to make sure our policy reflected the new language of the law. So yes, we did do this in consultation. They provided us the language for that.
Okay. Moving down the road, I was just going to say, working with Niola would be a wonderful way to coordinate all of this. Just saying. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just, just.
Vice President Forrest.
Thank you, thank you. Just, just a comment. I know that the 4100, the last time it was revised was in 2019. So now, two years later, there's been some changes in the federal law. So, correct, it's up to us to reflect that with an updated Board Policy.
The federal law actually impacted Title IX. So the current language as it related to 4100, we just made that specific to some recommendations that our attorney gave us. So it wasn't necessarily a change in law as it relates to, excuse me, discrimination. But we just made it consistent because the terms that we use, the vocabulary that we use is consistent between those two policies.
Thank you for that double clarification. And I know 5116, that, the sexual harassment policy, that was last updated in 2015. So certainly time to revisit that and do that again. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll now move to public comments, non-agenda items. I do have a few citizen participation forms here for Amy Ferns. I'd like to invite you to the podium.
A young boy, he couldn't have been older than 13, was sweeping the walkway. The officer informed the boy that he'd missed a piece of dirt. The child ran to sweep it up. The officer shot him in the leg. With a cry, the child fell forward. "Get up and keep working", the officer yelled. The child dragged himself up and continued to sweep. The officer shot him in the other leg. "Get up, get working, you lady", the officer screamed. The child tried, but obviously couldn't get up. The officer emptied his gun into the child's body. "When we arrived, Adam said to me, I had my little sister by the hand. They tore her from me and one soldier threw her over to another. She screamed for me, 'Adam, Adam', then the soldier took her little body. So she was face up, looking at him, and he raised his knee and broke her back like it was a stick. Then he threw her away onto the ground." "I will not leave them", Auntie Leah replied. "You must." "I will not", she held on to their hands. Casually, the soldier raised his pistol and shot, first the two girls, then Auntie Leah, in the head. "If these images were on screen, this movie would be rated R. However, these images of violence are quote, age-appropriate", end quote, I was told by my school's principal. But to be fair, she also told me that she hadn't read this book. This is the same age group that is not allowed to cross the school parking lot at the crosswalk by themselves without an adult escort. These expert excerpts came from Daniel Story by Carol Matas. It is a fictional, personal narrative of a Jewish teenager living through Nazi Germany and the Holocaust. It is one author's fictional interpretation of the events of the time, not an autobiographical account of actual events. As I understand it, all Huron Valley School eighth graders will be forced to read this book sometime this year. I am here to bring awareness of the graphic nature of this book being forced on our children. By a show of hands of the school board, please, how many of you have read this book? I have read this book. It was incredibly difficult to get through. It is graphic. It is terrifying. It lives up to its theme, quote, man's inhumanity toward man, end quote. I cried. I had bad dreams. I felt sick to my stomach as I read this book. We all should be aware of and learn about this evil part of history. While I believe in the absolute necessity to teach history as it happened, the good and the bad, and I am not opposed to teaching about this time in history in eighth grade, it should be taught in history class, providing facts, not as an ELA assignment of reading fiction. I'd like to know, what is the curriculum surrounding this book? What is the pedagogy of this lesson? What are you hoping to teach our children from this graphic horror? This book is too graphic for some in this age group. A few years difference in when a child is exposed to graphic details will not change the value of that lesson for them in their lives. It should be up to parents to decide when their children are ready for this level of graphic detail. A simple Google search reveals that on Goodreads.com, there are 42 eighth-grade-level books on the Holocaust. On Scholastic.com, there are 24 books on the Holocaust. Eight are appropriate for eighth grade, according to the site. There are many, many options for our children, our middle schoolers, to read about this topic. By the way, none of my Google searches revealed Daniel Story as a selected book for this age group. I also went to the White Lake Public Library and asked for books for an eighth-grade reader to learn about the Holocaust. Daniel Story was not recommended. I am requesting, at the very least, that an alternative option be available for our students this year to complete this lesson without reading this book. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Massal.
Hello, good evening. It's nice to be talking with you again. I wanted to circle back to a topic that we discussed during the last board meeting, and that's the role and participation in the National School Board Association. I understand towards the end of that meeting that Mr. Carlson read an apology letter from the National School Board. And while I appreciate their words, their actions have not followed suit. They have yet to go back to the government, to the DOJ, to the Biden administration that they colluded with prior to releasing this letter, to retract and demand that all of these special task force be dismissed or disbanded, or anything of the sort. And I stand here tonight and would like to understand what possible value an organization could have that our tax dollars are being spent to support has when they view the parents that are supporting the districts as terrorists. And while they may say their words don't mean anything and it was in mistake, the facts say something very differently. I would also like to understand, as I also attended the Wald Lake School Board meeting last week, where or if this district is also going to be sending representation to the meeting in Washington DC in January. From my perspective, as well as many parents in the district, this is not an appropriate use of funds, and we have far better, more important things to be spending our money on. on as a district. And then the second question, and I'm not sure if it's tied up with the new website that the district is enrolling, but the meeting minutes on the website are old. The last update was from September 17th and it's also very confusing, I guess you would say, that all of the board member, board minutes, along with the various committee meeting minutes are all within the same document. I would think that the minutes should be published in a more timely fashion and in a separate file so that it's easy for the public to understand what's going on in these meetings in the, in the name of transparency. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Maggie Sittar.
I appreciate being able to speak. I am speaking on behalf of a number of parents that are not available and I am absolutely grateful for the two teachers that we have this year. It is, they are an absolute gift and they are graceful, impatient, beyond measure on the normal teaching level. So the three things I wanted to address, but first I want to touch on the fact of the definition of fear. Fear is an intensely unpleasant emotion in the response of perceiving and recognizing danger or threat. Fear causes physi... changes that can produce behavioral reactions such as mounting aggressive response and fleeing the threat. What my great, my biggest concern as a parent is the amount of fear that is laid on my two children. When I look at the reason why we are here, because of COVID and the numbers and how they are, and I send all of this to the superintendent with the support of these numbers, it is absolutely mind-boggling how we are here 20 months later. It is, I mean, to the fact that the flu and pneumonia, heart disease, drowning, firearms and motorized vehicles are at a level much higher in death, and I hate to even say the word death, but it's absurd. It, I mean, we, it is absolutely absurd and that is such a concern to me because going into the masks, I sent the email with support of an alarming report for the long-term effect for masks on our kids. That's one adjust, point I want to make for masks. The second point is that my children couldn't wear their masks that go along with their Halloween costume because it was a, it, it, they weren't able to learn that day. So that's quite interesting that we're sending our children to school in masks and I know that my son had concern of listening and being able to hear properly because masks were worn by her, their teachers or are being worn by their teachers and trying to understand in his classes, so large that they do move the children around in the classroom, but he's having a very difficult time hearing because I never realized personally how many times I read people's lips until this pandemic and having people wear masks and I can't read their lips. We also submitted a medical exemption from our doctor and it was denied. A number of different schools are accepting that medical exemption and if you, on a regular basis, would send my children home for any kind of reason, if they fell at the playground, if they had a sore throat or anything like that, we would go to our family doctor and have, for the 10 years of my son's life and the eight years and all of my life, when I have any kind of medical concern. And now those are not being recognized. I have a great concern for that. There's many different additional resources that we have and I spoke to Mr. Hamilton on this that are not being addressed. We are putting so much focus on the mask and we aren't putting into proper nutrition, exercise, hydration, sleep and teaching our children the value of those versus the value of fear. You can probably guess or assume that how I feel on vaccines, again, all this is based on choice, just like my son spoke at the Board of Commissions, which I don't know that any of you guys were there, and all he asked for was a simple choice, that's all. There is proper respect to anyone's choice and what they want to do and what they feel that's right for them. And again, the CRT is super important in realizing that we need more communication around this because it is very confusing when I search CRT and SEL and some areas that it is together and some of it is not. And as parents, we deserve to understand where our community feels that this is appropriate, again, like the situation, what was read, some very harmful things. I was brought up that you are guilty by association, so the National School Board calling me a domestic terrorist is absolutely appalling. And the three rules in the game of life that I teach my children and anyone who I work with is, one, past is perfect because we can't do anything about it. Number two, we're doing the best we can with the tools and resources we think we have access to and I know we have more. And the third is that we must take personal responsibility and I demand, as a parent, we all take better responsibility for our future.
Thank you. Shayna Levin.
Hi, everyone. I'm Shayna Levin. I wanted to take a moment to thank you for your accessibility with the recent community forum, although I would have liked to see the forum publicized at all. I was glad to have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Dodd and Mr. Carlson and Mr. Wiseman. I also appreciate being allowed to sit in on committee meetings as I recently attended both the Communication, Marketing and Legislative Meeting and a TLT Meeting and both were very interesting and had good muffins and cookies. Most of you respond to emails and you're doing hard things and putting yourselves out there and we, parents and community members, do appreciate it. Other district boards and administrators won't even respond to emails and several districts think you are all crazy for inviting your stakeholders to sit one-on-one and talk with you, but if that's crazy, then I like crazy. We ask that you do please continue to be accessible and to also continue to be a voice for parents who don't have a voice with groups like the Oakland County Health Division and the Michigan Association of School Boards. We count on all of you to speak up and stand up for policies and statements that don't make sense and that don't promote parental involvement and parental choice. We know the job that you do is not easy and working together helps all of us sleep better at night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to Section 13, Good and Welfare. Any Good and Welfare? Vice President Forrest.
Sure, just something fun this coming weekend here on Valley Council for the Arts is sponsoring their Arts and Greens Art Show at Bogey Lake Greenhouse, which is across from Lakeland High School, so that is Saturday and Sunday, so come on out and check out the arts from local artists in our community and support one of our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Good and Welfare, Ms. Dodd?
Three quick things. Another fun thing to do this weekend is come to Milford High School and see Once Upon a Mattress, Friday night, 7 o'clock, Saturday, 1 o'clock, Saturday, 7 o'clock. There are still tickets available online. Number two, it's National Apprenticeship Week, so one of the things I really appreciate about Huron Valley Schools is we are encouraging students to really look at their options after high school. College is certainly one of them, but getting an apprenticeship is, is actually another really exceptional thing. So if there are students out there, families out there looking and trying to figure out what's next, please take some time to look at apprenticeship and to, to look at some of the information that's coming out this week. There's really, really great stuff out there, as well as military, which we, we've heard about our wonderful veterans today, too, so. And then the third thing is Small Business Saturday is coming up soon and the small businesses in the Huron Valley community do so much to support our schools, from providing snacks and drinks and coffee and all sorts of things for our, our schools and our teachers and our kids, to making sure that we have lots of options for insurance and all sorts of other things. We, we have wonderful small businesses in the Huron Valley community and I really encourage you to shop small and local during the holiday season because these small businesses sure do need our support.
Yes, Mr. Wong.
So we've mentioned several times how much we wanted to thank the voters for the renewal and, of the bonds and millages. I, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't also thank the, the business hole, the business owners in this area that helped us get the message out about what this millage was about and also the other stakeholders that were out there endorsing it, getting the, getting the message out and informing people what it truly meant and of course also other local government officials that helped with this effort. So I just want to make sure that all the people involved in getting our millages passed have our gratitude.
Any other Good and Welfare? Mr. Wiseman.
Yeah, just a real quick one. President Carlson mentioned, and I'd like to say, reinforce that and just say thank you for those individuals that have been involved in the Community Connection Forum and also those that have spent a number of hours already as it relates to us futuring this district within the task force. The other thing I do want to acknowledge, and I don't believe it was mentioned, that the Executive Committee, President Carlson, Vice President Forrest and myself had an opportunity to meet last week also with what we call the Huron Valley Vibe with our, our teaching staff, our instructional staff, and we were able to sit in a round table, listen to them, to work together and for one purpose, and that's to make this district the very best it can be. And I know we all, as a Board of Education, have that one focus and that's the reason why we're here, be the very best that we can be and I look forward to our continued dialogue as it relates to that.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other comments for Good and Welfare, this meeting is adjourned.